Good morning and welcome to this meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners for July 9th, 2024. If you would please stand for our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another gorgeous day in Berry County. Please be with all of us that are here to serve Berry County. Give us the wisdom, the guidance to make good decisions for the future of all who live here. Give us patience. Give us your blessing. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Doster.
Present.
Carlton.
Present.
Getty.
Here.
Smelker.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Tunisin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Reports from state and county officials. At this time, are there any state or county officials here with us who would like to update the board? Move ahead. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Allen Shawnberger, Colton Township. I would like to say whether you agree with me or whether you don't disagree with me, I'm opposed to the COA knowledge the way it is, and I'll tell you the reason why. Because the money doesn't actually go to the COA. The state robs the fund for the DDA and LDAF. How's that going to help our seniors when you take and the state comes in and robs it? And I feel that's wrong. If we're going to take and help our seniors, there's got to be a better way than the state and raising people's millages and taxes. People are strapped now to the end for food, for prescriptions, for many things. The assessments keep going up. I'm not willing to, myself, I'm not willing to override the headway because as it stands right now, I'm behind two years on back taxes if it is. And how many other people are losing their homes to back taxes because they can't afford the taxes? Because the way the county keeps raising taxes and the state keeps raising taxes, we've got to do something different because this definitely is not going to fly. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Gary White in Nashville. A couple of weeks ago, I did request to get a list of the stakeholders that the county was going to have interviewed as part of their county administrator search. And I guess it sort of came out concerning to me that of, well, it's our government, internal stakeholders. And when you go down to the deputy county administrator, county clerk, first deputy county clerk-elect, chief judge, prosecuting attorney, equalization director, the sheriff wasn't included in that. I'm not sure why he wouldn't be. When you look at the state constitution, I think the number one elected official is the sheriff, so it seems like that would definitely be a stakeholder. External stakeholders, once again, you have the economic development CEO, the Jennifer Heitzman, Bonnie Geddes, Community Foundation CEO, Sarah Moore Cole, Hastings City Manager, and then Fred Jacobs. Once again, that comes down to non-government organizations being your stakeholders, not necessarily the people's stakeholders. When you look at the chamber, Dave Jackson sits on the chamber. He is Berry County Commissioner, Member-at-Large. When you go over the Berry Community Foundation, when I searched their website, Fred Jacobs is on that. Debra Jackson is also on, and I believe that might be Dave Jackson's wife. So once again, this is all intertwined and concerning. Nashville has M-66, or Route 66 business district. There's no business districts. There's no citizens community, you know, community stakeholders for Berry County. But it's all centralized in just a couple of blocks here. So that, I'm not sure what a stakeholder is at this point in time. People keep on saying, well, what is a stakeholder? And then why don't we have any citizen group stakeholders? Why don't we have any private sector group stakeholders? So this becomes once again concerning to where if you're only taking, you're at a narrow mile, a narrow band of that, it should become concerning to many commissioners who are in the people out there. Stakeholder, the real stakeholders are the people that elected you folks. And I don't see much in that way, an aspect of here. So that was a concern that needed to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we will move ahead with our agenda. Approval of written agenda. At this time, any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such request, does any commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as written. Various correspondents, does any commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board? Consent agenda. Commissioner Smelker.
Mr. Chair, I move for the June 25th, 2024 Board of Commissioner Meeting Minutes.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield. For all items listed on the consent agenda, discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we have none this morning. Public hearings. This morning, we have a public hearing for the Mid-Villa-Brownfield TIF plan. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. If you have comments that you would like to state either for or against the Mid-Villa-Brownfield TIF plan, now is your time. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Kirk Campbell. I live in Thornapple Township. I also happen to be a trustee on the Thornapple Township Board. I'm speaking both as a trustee and as an individual in the county and the township. I have no problem with the Mid-Villa project in terms of building the apartments they want to build, but I do have an opposition to local taxpayer dollars paying the way for either the developer to afford it or for what I'll call rent subsidy to make the rent less for the people there. I don't think we need rent subsidies in Berry County and not in Middleville and not in Thornapple Township. I also am concerned that, I know that there's a shortage of affordable housing, but that's a systemic issue that's much larger than Middleville or Thornapple Township or Berry County. It's state and federal kinds of things that need to address that. I think, lastly, the people that will live in the apartments, many of them are going to head north on M-37 into Kent County to work. And so therefore, I don't think Berry County and Thornapple and Bradford White is going to get the bang for the buck that this project states that they'll do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I don't live in there. My name is Allen Shawnberger. Taxpayers got a fund for everything. They got to pay for everything out of their pocket. And when I say that, I said Bradford White is interested in this housing, let them pay for it. And the reason why I say that is many years ago, when EW Plus needed people to work for them, they're the ones who forged the houses up by EW Plus for the workers. Hastings don't have all that much manufacturing. We continue to move people in here, realize housing is an issue, but we continue to develop Hastings the way that we're going at it, not including the city of Hastings. Pretty soon, we're going to have the same crime rate and the same problems that our inner cities have got. Pretty soon, we're going to have to hire more police because the crime rate going up, then we're going to have to run more money for law enforcement. I think Hastings is going about just all wrong. We are definitely a bedroom community because we don't have jobs here in Berry County. The jobs are in the bigger cities like Grand Rapids, Lansing, and Calmazoo and all those places. And the way we're going, we're getting Hastings, especially with downtown. It's dead as far as I'm concerned. There is nothing downtown like what there used to be when I was a young man growing up. We've lost all of our businesses downtown. And if we want Hastings to be good, we're going to have to get more businesses and less housing. And so we don't have a community crime rate because I definitely have seen the crime rate in Berry County when we moved all this stuff in here. The crime rate in Berry County has definitely gone up.
Thank you. Additional comment?
Bill Matson, Hastings Program Manager at the Child Abuse Prevention Council. Just want to remind commissioners that stable housing is a protective factor in reducing child abuse and neglect. Housing is a big problem here in Michigan. It's a big problem here in Berry County. It's easy sometimes to say not in our backyard, but our backyard is where the people are. So I think that I would urge you all to approve the Brownfield TIF plan for Mid-Villa. It's important to the county. It doesn't hit those 6,000 people that live under poverty, but it does make a difference in kids' lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Additional comments on the Mid-Villa TIF project?
Yeah. Gary White, once again. I know Castleton Township, when they went to have their project, they negotiated to keep the EMS and fire and things like that at the rate it needed to be. As county commissioners, you're continually maxing out mileage rates. You're actually, well, in February, you said that we needed more mileage, so you went with a renewal with an increase. The COA is coming out for a mileage renewal with an increase also. So it's sort of hard to say if you don't at least have some type of negotiation here. Instead of just say, well, this is it, one way or the other, it may not be advantageous. Because it would seem like the taxpayers of Berry County are going to get hit, the property owners. So what is fair is our housing out here. Young people nowadays can't afford to buy houses. They're being approved for 50% to 60% of their annual income. When we were down as, well, when I was a young person in school, you always told, never budget more than a quarter of your income. Well, now they're having to budget 50%, 60%. Then you put transportation on top of that. You put food on top of that. What is fair? You know, is the housing, what else can you do for the other people that are in need of housing in Berry County for the personal property owner that wants to come and build a family here? So there's a lot to consider. So I'm not sure if it's just an up or down voter, if it's not actually a discussion and a negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments in favor or opposed? Last chance. Additional comments for or opposed? Okay, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. Items for consideration. Commissioner Getty.
I move to, for the approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $3,554,527.3.
Support by Smelker. Motion by Getty, support by Smelker, for approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $3,554,527.3. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of claims in the amount of $86,802.29.
Is there support?
Support.
Who is that? Tunisin?
Tunisin.
Okay. Approval of, motion by Getty, support by Tunisin, for approval of claims in the amount of $86,802.29. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of Commissioner's reimbursements, mileage, in the amount of $384.58.
Support, Doster.
Motion by Getty, support by Doster, for approval of Commissioner reimbursement mileage in the amount of $384.58. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 24-17, Resolution to Approve Ballot Proposal for Berry County Transit.
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Carlton, for adoption of Resolution 24-17, A Resolution to Improve Ballot Proposal for the Berry County Transit. Discussion. John, would you like to walk us through this?
Well, the millage vote will be coming up on the November election. It is to stay the same. And there has been improvements in our transit. There's more scheduled routes. And I think if Mary wants to, is it okay if she comes up?
Absolutely.
How are you guys today?
Good.
So I'm just going to put it out there. You're going to have to bear with me. When I public speak, I do like a weird shaky thing. Probably about the first two minutes, but I promise you, I will be all right. So just bear with me. So just to give you a couple of updates, we have started Saturday's backup, nine to three. We thought it was very important, especially for people needing to get to dialysis. They weren't able to get to their appointments, and family members are having a really difficult time getting them there, getting people to work. So we started that backup. And we started at the trolley around town. It looks a little bit different. We are doing our route versus fixed stops because we're not allowed to do fixed stops. That's originally why we stopped doing it in the first place. And then for the month of July, we are going to every Friday at 1:00 tour Berry County with the trolley, completely for free. We have a driver who's willing to do it. We started it last Friday, and it was perfect. I think we had 25 riders, and I got about three or four calls yesterday about how much people loved it. And we are completely fully staffed. It's been a long time coming, so really excited about that. And we are going to do a Pixel buying commercial for Berry County Transit and how to ride transit, because there's a lot of people out there who don't understand how to book a ride, and it'll tell them more about us. So with this millage, it's not just for Berry County Transit. It's for our grandparents, our parents, our children, brothers, sisters. Transit is part of the backbone of Berry County, and we take honor in being part of Berry County. And everybody deserves to have reliable transportation. So I did some research. In Berry County residents, we have right around 62,000. In the, this last year so far, we had driven 144,770 miles, or 144,770,000 miles, picking up 25,176 riders. 2,563 were seniors, 3,595 were disabled seniors, 6,371 were disabled passengers, and 16,496 of those passengers were general public. When I broke it down, we picked up about 40% of the community. Transit and the millage is important to them because it enables us to give them a low fare. We charge between $1 and $3 per ride. You cannot get better rates than that. We're a staple of the community. We impact the health and well-being of people, and we impact the economic well-being of people. Statistics show that seniors can't get out there and have socialization, they decline mentally. We get them to where they want to go. We get them to their doctor's appointments. We impact the economic well-being because we get people to work, and we take them to local businesses to shop, just as important. Right now, we're working with the Elks in providing free rides to veterans, which is something that's really important to me because my father was a veteran. So that is another way that we can take care of the people and the residents of Berry County. And even better, statistics show that if one family, if each family gets rid of a vehicle and takes public transportation, they will save over $10,000 a year. That's impactful. Now, just to give a couple of numbers, in 2023, our total operations amount was $1,863,74. It costs us approximately $7,500 a day to run. We received $582,478 from state funding. We received $604,000 from federal funding and about $600,000 from the millage. The total of that was $1,786,765, which allowed us to only take 77,000 out of our local funds. Without the millage, we wouldn't be able to run. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions from commissioners. Commissioner Doster.
I may have brought this up a number of years ago. I'm not sure, but have you ever thought of providing service on Sunday mornings for, you know, I'm a music director at a church, and, you know, there are a number of elderly who just would love to go to church and just are not able to get a ride there. Even if it was done once a month, it would mean a lot to a lot of people, I think.
It is something to take in consideration, too. It's something I think we tried a couple of times quite a while ago, before I was even operations supervisor. But I don't think it took. It's not something that would be completely off the table if I could find a group that was big enough to do it, but it would be increasing our hours and having to, because we can't do those kind of trips unless it's within our hours. But we can definitely take a look at it at some point. It's not off the table.
Thank you. Additional questions from commissioners?
I just want to make a comment more than anything. I think you can't tell me there's a lot of people rely on this solely as their transportation, right?
There are quite a few who rely on this solely for their transportation. I spoke to a woman, and this was a couple of months ago, but she's been riding for years, even since like I started as a driver. I would drive her around. And her comment was, when she started riding, she still had a vehicle. But the convenience of Berry County Transit and getting her there, the drivers who helped her carry her groceries, the communication and talking to people, because a lot of people spend days in their home with no connection. And being able to get on the vehicle and interact with somebody and have somebody care and listen to your stories. She stopped driving, and she just permanently rides. And daily, we have every night, and I could tell you, we pick up a lady on Briggs Road at 10:30 every morning to get her to Jimmy John's at 1:00. At 6:05 in the morning, we're picking up in Hastings and taking a gentleman to work at professional buildings. They're daily rides. There's people who, who all they have.
A lot of parents rely on it, too, after school, right?
They do.
Getting their kids to destination.
I do, I'd like to add a comment to that, that I know personally someone who is reliant, has no other transportation, and uses this to get to work in Hastings from Nashville.
Mm-hmm. Yep. We do that quite a bit.
I'm actually surprised how many people do not have transportation whatsoever in Nashville.
There are quite a few. We're over in the Nashville area every hour. We're headed that way back and forth every half hour.
And that's a tremendous improvement in the service. We once had, it used to just be a once-a-day thing. And it's really fantastic that it's once an hour now.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
There's no questions? No, we appreciate what transit does. I appreciate the information that we didn't have a meeting last Tuesday to go over some of this in detail, so we have to kind of do it on the run.
That's all right.
But very good information. I appreciate you bringing that to the board, and transit is an integral part of our county, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for having me do it. Okay, back to adoption of Resolution 24-17, A Resolution to Approve Ballot Proposal for Berry County Transit. That motion was made by Getty and supported by Carlton. So there's additional discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield.
Yes.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 24-18, Resolution approving Brownfield TIF plan for redevelopment project located in the village of Middleville.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Hatfield, for adoption of Resolution 24-18, A Resolution to Approve the Brownfield TIF Plan for Redevelopment Project Located in the Village of Middleville. Discussion. Commissioners, we had a lengthy discussion on this a few weeks back when we approved the public hearing request. We do have with us this morning Mark Middleton, the attorney for the county, who can also go over it. As we were talking to Michael about it, we did one for Nashville that was fairly simple. This one is probably as opposite and as complicated as it gets with the overlays between the DDA, the city, and the county. As we discussed, the county has the smallest piece of this of those local versus the local units of government for what the TIF, the tax increment financing plan would actually be. The local units of government, the DDA, and the village did approve this coming to us before. But is there other discussion or questions that you have? Commissioner Tunisin.
I just, my question is how they came up with the 14 years versus, I would support maybe a 10-year. I think $4.5 million is a pretty good number, too. So I'd be more inclined to possibly $3 or $3.5 million. I just think 14 years is a long time. That's a lot of money. So, I mean, I'm in favor of the project. I'm in favor of the housing that we need, obviously, throughout Berry County. But where these numbers came up with, I just, I don't know whether I think it's a little bit something to look at, that's all.
Okay. Keep in mind, per the conversation we had a few weeks back, based on the state statute, they were eligible to request 12 to 12.5 million dollars. They looked at the gap funding that they felt they needed based on They looked at the gap funding that they felt they needed based on the extra cost they had involved in it, construction cost. That's what the $4.5 million came up with. So, but, good point. Commissioner Campbell? Is it possible that we could hear a little more on this from Michael again? Is it possible or no? Of course it is. You want to hear from, you want to hear from Michael? You want to hear from the attorney? Hear Michael's input on this, okay?
I guess I'd maybe defer to Mark.
To Mark.
To walk his through.
Yeah, please.
Sure. Good morning, commissioners. Want to see you all. Some faces I haven't seen in a while. Happy to be here. So there are two items before you today. They're both related, this item and the next item. So under the Brownfield statute, historically, it was the case that if a proposed Brownfield project was located in a downtown development authority district, just like this one is, that you wouldn't be able to capture tax increment from that because the DDA would take priority and the DDA would continue to capture. State law changed back in 2023, I believe, one to allow tax increment financing to be used for affordable housing projects to make up that difference in terms of rents to make the units more affordable. And also to allow for a Brownfield with the consent of the DDA to have the Brownfield capture tax increment revenues on that property for that project. In order to do that, there has to be an agreement between the county, the DDA, the village, and the county Brownfield to allow the Brownfield to essentially capture those tax increment revenues that the DDA would otherwise be entitled to. So that's the second resolution that would be considered today. The resolution right now, in front of you on the table, is to approve that plan. And that Brownfield plan required by statute authorizes the capture of those tax increment revenues and can be utilized for eligible activities for the project. And those eligible activities now include, as I mentioned, capture to be used for reimbursement to the developer to make up that gap in affordable housing rents. So these two things work together. In terms of the specifics on this project, specifics on the plan, I'd have to defer to the county's Brownfield coordinator. And perhaps, you know, Michael, if you have additional background on the facts there for the specific project. But, you know, these are the two items that you have before you today and can answer more questions on those aspects if you have questions on that.
Go ahead, John.
I was just wondering how it happened that the Thornapple Township isn't voting on this like we are.
So, good question. The statute provides that the municipality in which the project is located is required to concur in the proposed Brownfield plan. And this project being located within the boundaries of the village of Middleville, the village has concurred as required by statute. And the township is, it's a little bit confusing, right? Because you've got, you have a property, property owners who are in the village who are also township residents and township electors and pay township taxes. But the way the statute is written, it's my opinion that it's basically the village that has to concur in that plan and not the township. It does raise a question, and this is where it gets a little bit complicated, folks. So hopefully I can break this down for you. I mentioned that previously under the statute, that the DDA would be solely entitled to capture these tax increment revenues from this property and that there is a change in the statute that allowed a DDA to say, we won't capture the taxes on this property, we'll allow a Brownfield to do it. So keep that in mind. Township has levied a emergency services millage for many years, an extirpated millage approved by township voters. That millage, by law, is subject to capture by the DDA. That millage, by law, if there wasn't a DDA, would be subject to capture by the Brownfield. The village and the township have, for many, many years, entered into a tax-sharing agreement that basically says that the village DDA will not capture that extirpated millage for emergency services, okay? That emergency services millage expired with the December 2023 levy. The township has approved ballot proposal to go before the township voters at the August primary election to ask for a renewal of that millage. And the village and the township have proposed to enter into a tax-sharing agreement once again, such that if that Thornapple Emergency Services Millage is approved by voters at the August primary election, that millage would not be subject to capture by the DDA. Because it's not subject to capture by the DDA, even if there is a tax-sharing agreement between the DDA, the county, and the Brownfield to permit capture of taxes from this property, that Thornapple Emergency Services Millage would not be subject to capture by the Brownfield. So, it's a long way to answer your question, Commissioner, that while there isn't express approval by the township and concurrence by the township of this plan like the village, the township is being asked to approve a tax-sharing agreement so that they maintain the status quo and that emergency services millage would not be subject to capture by the Brownfield.
But their operating tax that the township get will be subject to capture.
Correct, correct.
And then on this, heaven forbid, say the millage goes down August 6th, comes back in November and passes. Do we have to go through this paperwork again because it says the August 6th millage?
In terms of the tax-sharing agreement?
Yes.
Well, if it passed in November, yes, you'd have to have a tax-sharing agreement amongst all the parties to exempt that Thornapple Emergency Services Millage from capture.
As I stated before, it's a public hearing. I've been around quite a lot because this is a reelection year, and the majority of my constituents are not in favor of this.
Okay. Commissioner Getty?
I too have been talking with a lot of village residents, a lot that have not been, you know, up to speed on what's happening with the TIF. And it's complicated, you know, as Mark has pointed out. But the number-one comment I received from village residents is that their taxes are very high and they're struggling to make those payments. And it's a real hardship for many of them. And then when they hear about 144 new families coming in and a developer getting a pass on taxes for 14 years, their question to me immediately is, if they can afford to provide government services to 144 families for 14 years, well, then they should have been able to reduce my taxes. Then maybe it shouldn't cost me this much to live here. And the second biggest complaint is that the project is too large, that it's outsized for a small town. And when I worked for Thornapple Township and I worked for the village of Middleville, the number-one comment when we did master plan updates was that people wanted to maintain the small-town feel. And part of that is not cutting off growth, but it's measured growth, it's smart growth, it's providing projects like the village of Nashville. And I will say that project is very scaled to the village of Nashville. This project, and I've been very outspoken about it, that I think it's out of scale for the village of Nashville. It's like 50% larger than Thornberry Apartments. And there's room back there to build a whole nother apartment building, by the way. So these are the comments that I'm getting door-to-door with the actual taxpayers in the village of Middleville. The council voted unanimously to pass it. They are the closest to those residents. But in good conscience, I have to go still door-to-door and face those people that will or will not reelect me. They are my largest voting bloc. The DDA board is not a full board right now. They're having significant issues getting board members appointed to that board. I believe it's a, is it a seven- or nine-member board? Nine?
Nine.
Nine-member board. You have six people that are seated on it. Five members were there present at that meeting. Only four members were there initially, and the chair had to call somebody in, the village president had to call somebody in to make that decision. The board president or board chairperson was unfortunately sick that evening and absolutely could not make the meeting. They went ahead with the vote. It was a split vote, 3-2. And the DDA is a major player in this. So that's what I'm hearing. I wanted to share that with every member of the board. I'm not against housing. I'm not against affordable housing. I absolutely believe that we need housing in the community, but I think housing that's right for our communities. And to Commissioner Tunisin's comment, I don't know if you made it here today, but you said it before, is I don't think that this project is going to serve the village of Middleville residents. I think they're paying the tax burden of maintaining facilities for this project, and it's going to serve the greater region. And I think that tax burden, then if they feel so strongly about it, that should have been spread out to the region. And not just, how many people? 30, is the village up to 4,000 now?
4,300.
4,300. And that's total population, that's not taxpayers.
Commissioner Carlton?
I'm kind of split on this because when I was on Nashville Village Council, I was like the only member, you know, against a similar project, but more right-sized. You know, there's only 20 units and the village of Nashville has about 765, 1,765 people in it. So that was more right-sized, adding 20 units. So I'm now looking really, I would like to understand what, I don't live there, you know, I haven't gone door-to-door like Catherine, and I'm not as close to it as John. And I'm thinking, one of my arguments against it in Nashville was the family next to me who bought a house for 165,000, and they had a baby, young couple, were going to pay more taxes than a $7 million project. And that was just seemed to me a basic fairness issue, and I see the issue applies here, too.
It does.
Absolutely.
You know, that, like I said, it's tough because I like to see, we need housing. I know that. I know there's a shortage of housing. I get calls all the time, people looking for housing, looking for housing, and definitely affordable housing. So, you know, this is really a tough one. It's on the other side of the county from Nashville now, and perhaps needs more discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Doster?
Mr. Middleton, I've been told that the density that they're using here does not comply with the master plan. Do you see that as a problem?
Commissioner, I can't comment on that. I don't, I don't know the facts of that.
If, let's put it existentially, if setting this project aside, could there be ramifications for a project that is, does not comply with the master plan?
I mean, it's a zoning issue, and I think that it's separate and apart from the Brownfield question. So, yes, there would be ramifications for the developer with respect to compliance with But I don't think that would cross over into a ramification with respect to the Brownfield plan.
Okay. It's been brought up, it sounds like the DDA is an important, integral part of this discussion. And if it's true that only three members of it voted in favor of this from a possible nine-member board, would it be in our purview to ask them to relook that over to see if we can get a larger support from that board? I hate to go forward with something when it's only a third of that board that appears to be in favor of something.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the village manager's present, and I don't know if it'd be appropriate to defer to him to talk about the DDA proceeding, but, because I, I'm not sure. But it's up to the chair.
Yeah, that's fine. Welcome, Craig. So as Commissioner Getty alluded to, the DDA is a little bit of flux, some political turmoil going on right now. So to say, you know, if you threw it back to them, whether they'd approve it or not at this point, whether everybody would show up for a meeting, I don't know to answer that question. So would it be, would the result be the same if there were different members on there? Maybe, maybe, I don't know to answer that. But they did, they did approve it in the meeting. When they did have the meeting, yes, it was only three votes that approved it, but it was a majority of the quorum present, and they did approve it, so. Any other questions for me, if I'm here?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is there, what about this argument that it's not serving primarily the citizens of Middleville, that it's serving the metropolis of Grand Rapids, yet the people of Middleville are being taxed for it?
So the, I would say that's, it's probably not going to be a satisfactory answer, but it's probably not a legal question, more of a political question. In the resolution before you to approve this plan, there are required findings that the county board has to make with respect to approval of the plan. And those findings, those determinations, don't really, aren't focused on the question that you're asking, right? So it's not necessarily a legal requirement for the county's consideration and adoption of this plan. But again, that's not to say that it's not a political consideration for this board to take into account.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatfield?
Tax increment financing has always been somewhat of a dilemma for me. And yeah, this goes back probably 30 years when tax increment financing was first authorized by the state for use with industrial development projects. And it very quickly became a situation where if a community did not agree to provide tax increment financing for a significant proposed project, it simply went down the highway to some other community that was willing to do tax increment financing. So, yeah, communities had, if they wanted... So, yeah, communities had, if they wanted industrial growth, they had little option but to offer the same incentives that the community down the road, or the state next door, were prepared to offer. And now we find that we're in the same situation when it comes to housing. Is it in the long-term best interest of the county, or in the local municipalities? Sure, if you look down 14 years, there's significant tax base there that will produce fairly significant revenues for those units, but it's a lot to give up on the front end. Yet, since the state has now authorized it, once again, we're in a position where if we're not prepared to provide those incentives, there's probably some other community that the developer can look to that would welcome them with the same, or in this case, perhaps even greater incentives. I'm happy that at least the request in front of us is not for the maximum amount that they could have sought, but it still doesn't resolve the questions that Commissioner Getty has raised about, is it really fair for the citizens of Middleville to place the burden for public safety and other municipal operations on a project that's large enough that it will undoubtedly have a major impact on the need for those kinds of services? I do wish that we had, I think, clearer guidance from the DDA. If this request were in front of us, and, you know, the full DDA had, the full authorized DDA board had passed that unanimously, that would have sent a very strong message to me about the desire of the community to host a project of this size. But we don't have that to fall back on. So it is more problematic and not as simple as I would like to have it.
Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Hatfield on that. Okay, the clarification came today that there were only three people voted in favor of this, out of a council of nine. I don't feel that's a fair representation of the village. And am I wrong with that, Catherine?
It was the DDA.
The DDA.
Not the council, but...
But, okay, I'm sorry.
Correct.
But still, I mean, you think that's a fair representation of the village?
I don't think, I think that the project is significantly complicated enough that the village residents don't understand it. You know, from, you know, they're not following it, certainly, you know, like I am.
Right.
You know, and, and I, you know, Commissioner Hatfield summed it up really well, is that these 144 units are absolutely going to be a draw on public services. And, you know, who should, if housing is that important, then, you know, it would have been, I think, more of a regional subsidy than the local subsidy. There's not that many taxpayers in the village. And again, I go back, every single conversation I have with village residents is that their taxes are too high, and how can they afford to provide tax-free living for 144 families?
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Colton?
I think this needs to come back to us. They sent us something that they couldn't get together on. It should be unanimous on their part, that they're going to send us this. They were split, and we're split. And on my vote counting, I see three definite no votes. I'm thinking of maybe a fourth, and I would hate this is defeated, and I'm not sure how other people sit. I don't think it's ready yet.
Okay.
For the commission, I'll note that, you know, there's no requirement that you adopt this today. Today was an important step in terms of holding the required public hearing, and so the commission certainly does have time to further consider this. So you are not required to make a decision on this today.
Okay.
Craig, what was the vote from the city, or from the?
It was unanimous.
Unanimous, so the city?
Village.
Village of Middleville voted unanimously in support of the project, for the record. The other thing is, I think, if you reviewed your project, your packet, excuse me, there were letters of support from businesses, schools, this, when you bring this many families into the community, you're bringing business to your restaurants, you know, to all the areas in there. And I think there was considerable enthusiasm about that. The other part was just the housing that we've heard on the, when we were here a couple weeks ago, you heard that housing is needed, workforce housing is needed. This has been one of the biggest things that we've heard time and time again, come before this board, is where do we get housing, especially workforce housing, affordable housing? The state put the tool in our lap, the developer had a gap, they decided to use that tool. Like I said, so there's an opportunity for us, and as Commissioner Hatfield pointed out, we can either be a pro-business friendly community, when you can invite people to come into Berry County and build and develop and solve the housing issue, or we can say no. And it doesn't fit, because I hear what you're saying, when people are tax-sensitive, you know, the millage fatigue, there's a lot of things going on right now, the community, the county is very generous. However, there are certainly considerations in there. The other piece to this was not only is it the workforce housing, where the TIF plan comes in, but the developer also has plans to develop other projects in addition to this, which are not being captured, which are going to offset a lot of that revenue as well. So there's some different pieces to this to consider, and maybe being two or three weeks away from this, some of that's not coming, excuse me, back. But, so there's a lot of moving parts, but if the sentiment of the board at this point is that we want more information, or that we want to table this and come back to it in a couple of weeks, or a month, or whatever the case is, and visit with the DDA and talk about this some more in detail, I think it was a strong statement that the village approved it seven-nothing. So that's where their voters are as well, that they have to get reelected as well. So, I mean, their voters, their council members said yes to this project. So I'm still of the opinion that if they're taking the biggest piece of that 4.5 million, we're taking, I don't know if it was 12%, 15%, something like that, it wasn't a big, it wasn't a big piece of the 4.5 million. And I was encouraged to know that they can negotiate after the fact, and that the capture for the emergency services could actually be pulled out, that that was an interesting piece to have, that with the negotiation with the DDA, the county, the brownfield. So there's a lot of positives to it, and I go back to the fact that workforce housing is needed. And although we can't control where they drive to work, you know, the statement was made this morning that there's no jobs here. 35% of the jobs that are in our county are manufacturing-based jobs. Those are jobs that need workforce housing, that need affordable housing. So, I mean, that's a big percentage. We have one of the largest percentage of manufacturing jobs for a county in the state. So it's very important that projects like this go through, and I don't mind if we take some more time and review this and continue to delve into this, but this is an important project for our county. And it'll say a lot about where we move, how we move forward in addition, with additional housing projects. So, except, I don't mind if we want to table this, reconsider it, bring the parties back together, we'll talk about it. But I think this is, this is very important for us as a board and for the county as whole, that we get all the facts on this and be sure that we are in alignment moving forward with this. Commissioner Hatfield?
Well, I want to thank you for bringing up a few items that I should have, you know, also mentioned, and that is the fact that there will be, in all likelihood, a significant amount of other development that will take place on this site or near this site that will produce new tax base. And I think, yeah, it's, in making this decision, it's important to keep that in mind and perhaps, you know, try to put some numbers to that so that we can better understand what the contribution actually will be of this total project. And I think that it's also impressive that you have, that we have the letters of support that we do have from other entities, like the schools, that will be very significantly impacted by this. And this is not the only project that we're going to have this same type of a dilemma on. You know, we've got one or two projects in the city of Hastings where we may also see the, you know, TIF issue come back to us. And, you know, certainly, when you look at the impact on the community, you know, while this project will have a very major impact on Middleville, if you look at the collective new development that's been approved in the city of Hastings, they're experiencing exactly the same type of things. So the only absolute that we really do know is that there is a housing shortage, and that our employers are feeling that, and feeling that it has a significant negative impact on their ability to attract new employees. And if we want them to stay here or grow here, we need to be sensitive to that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Tunisson?
I'm in agreement that we need housing. I have no problem with housing, but how we get there and the fairness of it is what I'm more concerned about. So I would like to see us revisit this myself. So, I'm not against it. I just want to see us revisit it, on top.
Mr. Campbell, any further comments?
Yeah, this is a tough one. I'm hearing it from both directions here. And, you know, we are talking about housing, but we're also talking about the taxpayer. We may have some extra housing when they can't afford to keep up with their taxes. You know, we keep going with his taxes, so it has to pay a part. You know, when do you say when? Right now, I'm just, I'm at that point where I like to hinge on the caution side, and right now, I'm just not totally convinced where this is going. I'm just not convinced on it. You know what I'm not convinced, I'm not going to, I'm not going to agree to something that I'm just not sure of yet.
Okay. Commissioner Smelker?
I got a couple of questions, again. If I could, could I ask Craig a question?
Yes.
I was there the night the village voted on it unanimously, but I was not there on the night, did the village have a public hearing on this?
Yes, we did.
And that?
There were a couple of people from the public at the public hearing, and then they did approve it.
Okay. And then, on my second thing, thank you, Craig. On my second thing, and then with the commercial part and the storage part on this, them taxes, am I correct in saying the DDA will capture them taxes? And will school millage on them captured taxes go to the schools or the DDA?
The DDA doesn't capture school millage.
They don't?
No.
Good.
Good discussion. Is the feeling at the board at this time that we need some more information on this, that we want to revisit this? Do we need a motion to table?
I'll make that one.
I vote no. Anybody's welcome to knock doors with me and hear what the village residents think about it.
I'll make the motion to table.
Motion to table by Colton, is there support?
I'll support that.
By Tunisson? Okay. All those in favor of that? Good.
Little discussion. Mr. Nittleton, would you, I've kind of forgotten the specific value of the word "table." Would we adjourn this to a date certain? Would that, I would like to see a date that this would come back, as like the end of August or something.
Technically, Mark, correct, the table is during the meeting that you're at. If you're looking to do it to a future date, it would be to postpone it, as I understand it.
I think that works.
You're effectively postponing, so the motion would be to postpone until, and that's helpful, if we know a date that you want us to bring it back to you.
Would you stake a month?
Just bring it back to the last BOC of August.
That's okay with me.
Okay.
That way it gives time for DDA and the village to meet again.
Okay. I'll accept that amendment.
So you're talking about August 27th, Tuesday, August 27th?
Yes, sir.
So, what's that? So, motion by Colton, support by Tunisson, to postpone the agenda item until August 27th, 2024?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Additional discussion? All those in?
Do you have to move to the floor?
No.
Or is it postponed?
No. Who say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It is postponed. Mark, in consideration of item F, which is the adoption of Resolution 2419, are these separate or together? Should they also be?
They're intertwined, so I think this one should also be moved to that date.
Okay. All right. Do we need a motion to postpone it for that agenda item as well?
That would be appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you don't act on it, you don't act on it. So it certainly would be consistent if you then postponed action on that second resolution as well.
The chair will entertain a motion of postponement for the adoption of Resolution 24-19, Resolution to Approve Tax Increment Revenue Sharing Agreement and Matters Related thereto, until August, what was the date, 27th?
I'll make that motion. I'll motion that.
Motion by Tunisson, support by Smelker. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Do we have to withdraw the motion, or the original motion?
So, Mark, I'll maybe defer to you, too, but my understanding is that in the order of Robert's rules, you made a motion. The motion to postpone then overrules that, so effectively, that motion now no longer has any action.
Am I correct that the commissioners who may have supported that original motion, it's motion to postpone?
No. Because I made the motion to approve.
All right. The motion to withdraw.
I'll make a motion to withdraw my motion for the adoption of Resolution 2418.
And you agree with that, Commissioner Colton?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion?
Was it a support, Oster? If there wasn't a support, there was support, okay.
Yeah, was motion by Getty, support by Colton. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Technicalities. Unfinished business, we have no new business, we have none. County administrators' report.
I'm all set.
Chairperson's report, I am all set as well, we're just at the start of our meeting cycle. Vice chairperson's report.
Same thing.
Commissioner reports, Commissioner Oster.
I was going to mention that I was contacted by Marcia Bassett here 10 days ago or so, and asking about my committee assignments, and wanted an update on how things are going and what those consisted of. And so I met her for breakfast, and she brought a notepad and went through in rather extraordinary detail what those would be. I think I've had some... I think I've had some success on some of them in garnering some, I would say, power maybe for Berry County, the area agency on aging, which is called Care Well now. This board put me on their advisory committee, but then their advisory committee then put me on their administrative board, and then their administrative board then put me on their finance committee. So that turned into three committees, of which, you know, she was unaware that, and then for somebody to pick all three of those back up would, would give a continuity and a lot of say for Berry County and an organization which is predominantly controlled by Calhoun County because it's so much larger, but it gives us, it helps equal the playing field. Also with the SWB board, this board put me on their substance abuse board. There are two SWB boards, however. And then this board also put me on mental health. Mental health then put me on SWB's other board, their administrative board. So I became the first person in the history of SWB, which is only 15 years, to serve on both boards. Well, that gave me enough power to help, to help cultivate. Well, that's true. We were able to receive some funds that we had never received before. I was able to help move a new person into the chairmanship of that board, which became only the second person to be the chair of that board, which is going to rather dramatically change the focus of that board, to give a lot more power back to the mental health boards of all nine counties. And so these are things that I thought was very important. I was glad that she made the effort to, to contact me and to, and to learn what her position would, would be if she's successful in this endeavorment.
Thank you. Good information. Commissioner Colton?
Doing my monthly beings, Castleton, Woodland Village, Colton Township, and coming up on Woodland Township and Village of Nashville. I do, I won't be here next week, and it's because next week is Senior Day at the fair on Tuesday, so I encourage commissioners to come down, a lot of you are seniors, and at the...
What are you trying to say?
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to name names, but I think we know who is the seniors here. And, yeah, free rides from transit vouchers, free vouchers to four food vendors, I'm gonna get in on that. Vendor booths, giveaways, and the reason I have to be there, I have to set up music, I'm part of the entertainment, I'm gonna be performing with Little Miss Country. And, yeah, she sings that old school kind of country stuff, and I'll be assisting her with my alter ego Cowboy Mike, also known as Tater. And so I'll be sitting on music for that, so I won't be here next week.
The thing you're on. Commissioner Getty?
How do you follow that?
Follow Tater, ask him to perform for us.
We'll go to the fair. I was at Thornapple Township last night with Quisher Smelker. Their fire department pinned a deputy chief and three new firefighters that went through fire school, also, I think, promoted two, two other officers within that. So it was really an exciting night at Thornapple Township and to see where they're, and the meeting was held in the fire barn, to see where that fire department is going in order to protect the, the community. So it was, it was, it was a good night. I think that Rick wants me to make an announcement that the gas and steam show, the gas and steam tractor show, it's tractor, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, the gas and steam tractor show, the gas and steam engine show is this weekend at Charlton Park.
Second Saturday in July every year, Gas and Steam Show. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smelker?
Usually there's a dawn patrol on that same day, but that was canceled this year. I agree that I will not be here next week.
Gas and steam shows this weekend.
And I believe we are having interviews, aren't we, or talking about with Gulf HR?
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a second.
Okay. So I will be out of state.
Okay.
That's all I have. I was at the Thornapple Township meeting and they postponed their resolution, so that's another reason why I'm glad we postponed ours.
Commissioner Campbell?
I just recently visited the CAA in Battle Creek and Maple Grove, and tonight I'll go to Baltimore, and tomorrow night I'll go to Johnstone.
A-ching. Commissioner Tunisin?
Hastings charter tonight, and I'll do Rutland tomorrow. You want me to?
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Limited public comment at this time, and a member of the public wishing to address the board, and we do so for up to three minutes.
Hi, everybody. Nate Hybor, Mid-Villa developer. I wanted to come up and make this kind of short and sweet. I'm bummed, sure, but I'm, education is huge. It's been three years of, you know, meetings and facts and talking about a couple of things. I wanted to give a couple of fresh answers while we had some fresh questions out there. First off is the density and the zoning approvals. This was approved two years ago with a PUD, so we've worked with the village closely on changes, what they wanted to see, density. That's exactly why PUD is created, to work with the municipalities, to make sure that it's, it's a win for both sides. So as far as density, that, that has been talked about years and years ago. It has been approved unanimous by the village after all of our years of work. School has no issues with it as far as water and sewer. I'm putting in the lines and giving them to the village for free. So as far as will, you know, is there a zoning issue? Will this get approved? That ship has sailed a long time ago. It is approved, it's ready to be built, bids are out, contractors are ready to put shovels in the ground. The other big thing was, you know, this shouldn't just fall on, on the shoulders of local municipalities to help with, with this problem. And that's why the state, which I was not brought up today, I'm really frustrated it wasn't, 4.5 is a lot of money, but I'm using round numbers here, 4.5 is a lot to ask. The state has their checkbook ready to write a check back for 2.6 out of that 4.5. It's coming right back, 2.6 million dollars is from the state handing out, guys, we realize housing is a problem. Out of this 4.5, we'll give you all the money back for the schools, the schools will not be affected. That's 2.6 million dollars they're willing to help the county and the village and the township with, with this housing problem, and it's just gonna go by the wayside. The only other thing, and I, I'm not saying this to be a bully, but a fact that came up, I have been contacted by surrounding counties, please come talk to us, explain us what you're doing, we see you in the sun, we see what's going on, we want to know more. We have the same problem everybody else does, how's this program works? So this is, it's exciting to other people, and it's just a little bit, again, I'll use the word bummed, that some of the meetings I've had over the years in the township halls and the, the education's been out there, and all of a sudden some of the stuff just doesn't make it all the way to this meeting, but that's why I respect the, the tabling, the postponement. So we've reached out to anybody that wants to have a personal meeting, explain this. It seems like we have different questions from different people, that's why we're here to meet individually or put on another presentation, whatever it might be. It is frustrating that some of the stuff in the packet, like the 2.6 million coming back from the state, wasn't brought up today. But I've been working on years to do this, and another month is not a big deal. It's a big deal as far as cost for construction. Right now, everything is holding steady, and God forbid that stays the same way, because the more time, everything seems to go up. We know this over the years, hence the request, hence the creation of a program from the state. So I'm not saying I'm in a rush, but it has been a long time coming. The ducks are in a row, we're ready to put shovels in the ground, zoning is done, traffic studies have been complete, any hurdle that has been there, we've jumped over. The county needs to hopefully respect the votes that were before them, especially unanimous village vote that I hope that, or next month. Any questions you have, please, we're here, we're here to answer, we've always been very approachable, local, it's not hard to have lunch or go talk about something. So, so we're here, I'm sorry I'm out of time, but again, reach out anytime. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Rick Moore, not related to any other Mooers, I saw that there was no public comment for the second protest, that's why I got up out of line and asked Catherine Getty to let people know. The gas and steam engine show is on Friday and Saturday. We're having a pancake breakfast, a traditional pancake breakfast on Saturday morning, we invite commissioners and guests to volunteer. I'm always there to stir up the batter, and I really enjoyed going out to Charlton Park. Even though I'm a bicycle trail guy, my goal has always been a trail from Hastings out to Charlton Park, so people can see just how wonderful it can be out there with involvement. When we had to create two park boards, we had a tsunami of volunteers who crowded in to help Charlton Park and the trail board, and fortunately we still have a tsunami of volunteers who are willing to help and do things to help make Berry County better. And it is just so wonderful, and I'm no longer the trail dictator, that there's so many people willing to help and to do more. I'm still mowing the trail from 108 St. to Stimson Road. There's always people on those unpaved sections of trail looking for more asphalt because it's so much easier to walk on and to roll on, and the children in baby carriages are there bouncing around little rocks and that, and that kind of stuff. The new section in Nashville, that is wonderful. The people in Nashville certainly appreciate it. I go over there almost every day to, and wear my vest so people know that I'm part of the trail guy, and it is so popular with young parents. At one time, 67% of the folks in Nashville were renters, and so they really appreciate having a place to go for a walk safely and to see the community from the backside where the trail goes through. The VFW has got a large blank section of the wall. I'm trying to get somebody to paint a mural of the train that went through Nashville that the president was on. Seems like it was Roosevelt or something, went through there twice, there's pictures of that. They should be painting that on the VFW wall to let people know the history of the community because that's a fascinating thing. And all along the trail, I've collected historical information so we could put up plaques or carved in stone as to what kind of wonderful things happened in our community and to take advantage of this while we go for a walk and be healthier in the process. Thank you very much. I'm Rick Moore, and I endorse this message.
Thank you, Rick.
Additional public comment?
Hello, I'm Marcus Ringnaldi, part of the development team. Yeah, bummed was the word that was mentioned, and I do want to say I respect and appreciate all the conflicting community matters you guys have to deal with. There is, however, something here, this idea that more information is needed. Dialogue with members of this board started seven months ago. I've been up here for public comment on multiple occasions. Our plan has not changed. And if you want to knock on doors, we'll come with you. I called somebody from the Otto family yesterday, our kids go to school together, and, well, something's gotta happen there. So I just, not only the times in front of this board, we're questioning whether the DDA vote was valid, that is, that is not our problem. You guys have a yes vote on there, and if you go back to talk to them, because we went at multiple meetings there, multiple meetings at the township, and these various jurisdictions have commissioned studies to promote this development, identify this site for this kind of development. And we had very robust support expressed at, at the committee as a whole just a few weeks ago, and everything that has come up since then sounds like, we don't know who these people are, we're not hearing them. Give us a chance to talk, it does not seem like this project is being properly presented to the citizens, and that is, we're, we're here to come to every meeting like this and talk about it? And I don't know what else you expect developers to do to come utilize an incentive that the state has created, proactively reach out to every single jurisdiction impacted whether or not they're voting on it. Over the course of six months, two or three times a month, so maybe one more month isn't a big deal if you look at it that way, but I would advise you all to look at the studies that have been commissioned, sometimes that you guys are part of, sometimes at the villages or the DDA. What does a DDA exist to do? Why are we questioning their vote? They've spent immense resources helping us on this, promoting it. You're gonna get some varying opinions, and they're not invalid, but the idea of more time, seven months later, I mean, you guys saw me in March, and I've emailed various commissioners, any questions or concerns, let us know, let us help clarify it. And as developers, I don't know what else you expect us to do over the course of seven months. Thank you. Thank you.
Joel, it's on Rutland Township. I do and I don't have a dog in this fight, but one of the things here that kind of concerns me is all the, I don't know, someone turn that, the concerns that were brought up today, they've been here plenty of meetings prior, and none of those were mentioned at the prior meetings. I don't know if that's because election season's coming up, all of a sudden we're worried about who's gonna vote for us, who isn't, but as you said, they've been here since March, and, and the reasons to vote no, the negativity, I didn't hear any of that at any of the prior meetings. So that's, that's kind of concerning to me. I would think that especially the conservatives in the room would be all for lower taxes. In fact, one of my presidential debates, I was watching Ron Paul when he was running, can't remember what year, where he said, they questioned him, they said, 50% of Americans do not pay federal income tax, how do you plan on addressing this problem? And Ron snapped back, he goes, well, we're halfway there. So, like I said, I would think conservatives would be for lower taxes. Fair, oh, life isn't fair, as my dad says, life is hard and then you die. I heard the fair thing mentioned many times. If life was fair, the Berry County taxpayers wouldn't have been on the hook for an 18-month paid vacation for a deputy to go run off finding this elusive creature called voter fraud. If life was fair, then renters would not be required to pay homestead tax at all. How is their house that they rent any less a home than mine is to me? They rent, I own. Not everyone has the option to own, nor should they be penalized for it. The county cannot eliminate homestead tax for everyone, but in essence, they have the ability to do so with this project. I heard people say that, oh, we don't have manufacturing here in the county, while Hastings Manufacturing, Middleville Tool and Die, Munn Manufacturing, Hastings Fiberglass, Viking, Bradford White, just to name a few. My employee that I have pays $1,400 a month for an ill-maintained bottom floor apartment, not including utilities. This would, if you bring in more housing, you know, free market, more housing, less demand, it fills that void, maybe prices go down, just the way my mind works as a business owner for 15 years. So as for people, where they work and where they live, why does the government care? I want to live in a free society, I want to be able to live where I want, work where I wish, without government telling me what, when, where, or why. Fact of the matter is, people who live in Berry County bring more revenue into Berry County than people who live in Texas seeking work. Business will not expand if we don't have people to work. You have the opportunity to bring in 100 to 200 people into the workforce. You have an opportunity to increase the supply of housing, which will decrease the demand and lower costs. I hope the board reconsider's this and that conservatives in the room will get to their roots and push for lower taxes, lower regulations, and for the people who don't like seeing farm ground taking up for housing, this just seems like a win-win. There's my ignorance for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Once again, it's always important to listen to what people say. Your Berry County Transit Director talked about the seniors and how getting together is important for their mental state, I don't remember exactly how you said it, so that is important. So one of the things I'm concerned about is the CRA moving out to five miles outside of Hastings when you're... of Hastings when you're senior, you have a larger senior population here. Commissioner Hatfield at City of Hastings meeting said that the COA building is not set in stone to be approved out there yet, but yet I think there's been $354,000 approved for the planning. And say, Commissioner Colton at Rutland Township last month said that building is going up whether the village is approved or not. I'm just sitting here, so this is what I get to go to when I go to different townships and village meetings and things. This project that we talked about, I'm hearing I'm worried about reelection. I'm hearing that, well, the middleville is going to need to be reelected. That's politicians worried about a job instead of worried about the decision you're here to make for one way or another. So that is concerning. DDAs, are they becoming more of a monster as compared to a help? Now we hear that DDAs can go into agreements to not take away from, you know, villages and things like that. Have that been looked into? What is, how much tax base are they taking away that could be spread out county-wide? You know, DDAs, when they first came in, were probably, I don't know if you say more needed or not, but then we're hearing there's a political fight in the DDA in Middleville. I'm not sure what's going on with the DDA here in Hastings, but can they, can they, this might be an attorney question, give back to the counties for things? You know, do they just have to stay in their district? Can we renegotiate what they've done? Because once again, we hear that the DDAs are, I don't know, maybe too powerful in certain sections and that they're taking monies away that could have go to parks or could go to 911 because they capture this. So once again, there's things out there, when you start listening to what people are saying, if you have an open mind and say, okay, well, let's explore different directions, not just say, okay, I'm just stuck on this one thing, I think is incredibly important. So as I said, there's things out there to consider all the time. I think waiting until the end of August on this is not the right thing for anybody in Middleville and/or the developers or anything else. What were you looking for when you say, okay, we want this information? What information do you want? That's something that we need to know. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Ben Decker, resident of Nashville. I just want to take this opportunity to say that I'm proud of this board of commissioners. You guys have taken on a lot of big things, especially the COA building. You know, my 12 years on the board, this was a monumental challenge. We went out and asked for a village, spent resources to educate the voters. It was a lot of work and we didn't know what was going to happen after that failure, how we would get a new COA. You guys did it. You guys figured out a way. This is a good, good project and I'm angry that some in the community are confusing the COA rule with the COA building, the COA building project. This ballot question is a straight-up removal. It's asking voters, do we want to continue operating means on rules? Do we want to continue the senior healthcare, all the services that the COA offers? Do we want to keep it going? I'm voting yes. I think most of the voters in my district and in your districts where you live see the value in the COA. So I would hope that you as local leaders would help dispel some of these questions or accusations that the COA millerage is some big building project. It's not. It's a question to continue what we've been doing for generations. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
We have managers like this that the COA wants. They're setting on $400,000. They're going to be saving, they're going to be saving all kinds of money when they move out to where Thornapple Manor is because they're going to be doing the cooking for them. We're not going to be have to spend money on importing those here from Grand Rapids and that's just a lot of money that we'll be saving. All they want to do is have money in a war chest and when they set down over $400,000, that's uncalled for. While people out here are suffering from the burden of taxes and people already hurting from the ways things are, I just, I just can't say I'm in favor of it and there's quite a few people that I have talked to because of the tax issue, they're not going to override their headley. It's going to be wait and see because people have had enough of trying to override their headley. Every time a tax thing comes through, they want to override their headley, override their headley. How long before you're taxed out of your home?
Thank you. Additional public comment?
I would like to address the issue that was just discussed. I have also seen this on Facebook. The COA is sitting on $400,000. Well, no, they're not. There are two issues here. One, they had a building fund, which was much larger, but it was used to try to keep this building from falling down on the heads of seniors. It is now much lower. This money would be used for items that are going to be needed after this building is built. There is going to need to be some furniture replaced, some new furniture. There's going to be other things that come up that will not be covered by the donations that are being made to this building. The second issue is, the COA doesn't always know when their money's going to come. If they have money coming from the state and who knows for what reason, it gets held up, they can continue providing the services that they provide now, using this money that they have put aside for emergency issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Additional public comment? Commissioner comments. Commissioner Tennyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think today's discussion on this board was exactly why we're a good board. We know, and not to be respectful, we listen to each other and we'll come to something and we'll get this done. It might take a month, but we will get it done. And that's, I think that's what was important today is that John's talked to a lot of people, Catherine's talked to a lot of people, I know a lot of people in Middleville, I've talked to a lot of people. So for us to have concerns about the taxpayers and the village of Middleville is exactly why we're here, to listen to concerns. So as far as the COA, they have to have emergency money on hand, like Sharon just said, they have to have emergency funds. So $400,000 might seem like a lot of money, but not when you're paying out as much as they do all the time. So they have to have emergency money set aside. So and Sharon's right, too. There was a larger building fund at one time, but they've had to maintain that building. The roof's gone, leaks all the time, the whole place is, you know, it just needs to be replaced. For what amount of money, you know, it's like putting money into a bad situation all the time. So that's about all I got today.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Hatfield.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Smoker?
Yeah, I guess I heard a couple of things in public comment, that things have come up on the TIF just in this meeting. I thought I was extremely clear on the last meeting. I voted yes on the public hearing, but I thought I made it quite clear my thoughts on the resolution. And I don't know what Mr. Ibisson was listening to, but he must have missed me. And the second thing is, we are campaigning now to get reelected. For two years, we've been listening to campaign stuff come up here every week in public comment. And now when I do listen to my constituents, he finds fault with that.
If somebody doesn't know my opinion on the Middleville TIF, they haven't been paying attention.
Exactly.
I have a long history with this project and I hope that people understand I have a long history of listening to my constituents in the village of Middleville. That's not an election tactic. I find great offense. I'm going to get a little bit temperamental like my neighbor over here, Commissioner Smoker. I have advocated for the village of Middleville residents for the last 25 years. And I will not, I will not stand for somebody calling that into question. We may disagree and I am the first to say, we can disagree, but not be disagreeable. I will move on, I mean, if this is a split vote, I will move on and we will take on the next challenge that's before this commission. But to somebody to call my character into question and that this is an election issue, it's not. Go back and read the papers. I've spent a lot of political capital voting and expressing my opinions on this subject. And that's because I care deeply about my taxpayers. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Colton.
Your comment.
Commissioner Doster.
I have nothing.
Okay. Just a few comments. We got, I think all of you were included on the email from Pam requesting that we pay attention to our knowledge as opposed to turning them in every quarter, every year, every two years, that we turn them in every month. So can we address that with Pam and help our county administration out, please? So that was number one. Number two is keeping with our list of things, of our important dates. On Friday, you are going to receive your list of candidates who have expressed interest in the county administrator position. So that'll be coming from Ryan at GOV HR. So be on the lookout for that. At this point, that is a confidential list. We are scheduled to go into closed session on Tuesday to go over that list and make decisions on who you want to interview going forward. So those are important meetings. If you can change your schedule, I know two of you said you can't be here, but those will be important dates. So we're going to keep with that schedule and move forward and we'll have interviews scheduled coming out of that. So just some important stuff there. I thought it was good discussion today, that a lot of questions came up. I think some of those were a little surprising to some of us, but I think as Catherine pointed out, this board works well together. We'll vet it out, we'll move forward and we'll make the right decision for the community. So I appreciate all of your input on this and all of your thought and we'll get the facts, we'll reconvene on this and make a decision on it. Thank you all for coming. If you haven't seen a weather report, you should keep an umbrella handy the next couple of days. We're going to cleanse the earth, so it's going to be a little wet out there. So anyways, have a great day.